Hi Terry, hi Betsy, hi Katie.
Hey guys.
Hi Nikki.
Let me check Natalia, did Camila say she's gonna be calling?
She did say she'd be calling in.
Okay. So I'm gonna turn my video off, because you don't need to see me.
Natalia, I got that one public comment that you emailed to me. Was there anything else that came in?
No, that was the only one we got.
Okay. And was that, um, did, did he specify a particular agenda item? I mean, it basically is just everything in new business, but I want to make sure we read it at the correct moment.
There was nothing he specified. That email was just what he sent.
Alright, let me take a look. Alright, well, we'll do it at the top of, we'll do it at the top of section seven then. That's probably the most reasonable place. And Nikki, in keeping with our procedure that we followed so far, when we get to that public comment, could I ask you to read it into the record?
Absolutely.
Okay. We'll just wait for Camila to join us and then we'll jump in.
I believe trustee Wilkerson is on the line now.
Oh, perfect. I do see a phone call. Camila, is that you?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We sure can. That's awesome.
Okay. Alright, good afternoon.
Hi Natalia or whoever, would you just rename her box so that I remember? Perfect. How good is that? Alright, I will call us to order. It is 5:05 PM. This is a special meeting of the Altadena Library District Board of Trustees and we will start with our roll call. Trustee Andrews.
Here.
Trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
And trustee Wilkerson.
Here.
And I am here as well. So welcome, everybody. Thank you so much for being here and thank you to everybody who's with us virtually tonight as well. We will go ahead and approve and adopt the agenda. So if I could get a motion to approve and adopt the agenda as it appears in your board package, please.
So moved.
To adopt the agenda.
I heard Jason first.
I'll give it to Terry in second.
Okay. So moved by Terry, seconded by Jason. Before we take a vote, any requests to reorder anything on the agenda or change anything before we adopt it? Okay, hearing them, we'll go ahead and proceed to a vote like all our votes tonight. And in our virtual process, we'll do these by roll call. So I'll call on you and then you'll tell me how you vote. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan. And trustee Wilkerson.
I.
Perfect. That's an I vote for me. So the agenda is approved as it appears in your board package. I do not have any public comment on non-agenda items. So we'll move right into our consent calendar. And on the consent calendar tonight, it's the approval of the minutes from our last two meetings. So our special meeting on July 16th and then our regular meeting on July 27th. So if I could get a motion to approve the consent calendar, please.
I have a couple of edits on one of the sets of minutes.
Oh yeah, let's, let's do it.
On page five of the packet, this is the meeting where I was not in attendance, but shows that I moved and that I voted on new business.
Yeah, that is not correct.
So I don't know who did, but it wasn't me.
Yep, that's totally correct. Wait a minute. So you, Betsy, you were at the meeting on the 16th. You weren't at the meeting on the 27th.
Um.
I think you missed last week.
No, well then.
Well, that can't be right.
I wasn't, uh, I'm sorry, I can't remember which I, when I was at, but now I'm looking at the 27th minute and I'm in there too.
Yeah.
A lot more. So I think that's the one I was at.
I thought that you were not at, hang on, I'm gonna just check my email, because I know.
Good idea.
I believe you were not at my first meeting and I can't recall the date of that.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Betsy, you're totally right. You were, you were absent on the 16th.
Okay.
That's right. It's, we've had so many meetings, they kind of.
I know.
Pleasant hate. Okay, so we will need to make sure that we amend those meeting minutes from the 16th.
So Katie, this is Nikki. How about, we'll just bring those minutes back on the 24th of August.
Yep.
We can vote on them then.
Okay, we'll pull them out of the calendar for tonight then and we'll just vote on the meeting minutes from the 27th.
Yeah.
Yeah, good catch, Betsy. Thank you. Is there anything else that is incorrect? Now I'm looking through. So any other, any other changes to the minutes from the 27th? Okay, then if I could get a motion to go ahead and approve that set of minutes, so the minutes from the regular meeting on July 27th. Okay, and a second?
My second.
Okay, perfect. So moved by Betsy, seconded by Terry and we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on that. Trustee Andrews.
Hi.
Trustee Capel.
Hi.
Trustee Khan.
Hi.
Trustee Wilkerson.
I.
Perfect. That's an I vote for me. So we are good to go. Those minutes from the 27th are approved and then we'll bring back the ones from the 16th at our next, at our next regular meeting. Very cool. Okay, thank you so much for catching that, Betsy. I really appreciate it. Let's move on to section seven. We've got a report from the director. So Nikki, I'll hand it over to you.
Alright, good evening, board members and consultants and the public that are watching. We decided to provide a brief report at this meeting because we have so much going on. So it would have been like a month and a half if I'd waited till August 24th. So I just wanted to update you on a couple of things. We have officially scheduled the assistant director interviews for August 12th, which is next Wednesday with an external panel. They will rate the 10 candidates that were selected and the top three will be given to me to do the final round of interviews to select an assistant director. Really excited about this process and I'm hopeful that we'll have somebody starting by like mid, early to mid-September. As I mentioned in the report, we will wait for them to start to move on to the librarian selection because they're gonna be their direct report. So I want them to be involved in that. Just so you know, we had 19 assistant director applicants, which was really good. And over 50 librarian applications came in as well. So lots of qualified, good people. I'm really excited to hire and I think we're gonna get some really good people. Okay, so as far as reopening to the public in curbside, I just wanted to remind everyone that you can now place holds on the items that you want. In the past, when patrons called, it had to be like available now type of items, but that's not the case anymore. We moved to holds a couple of weeks ago and the staff have let me know that it's a much more streamlined process, which is really great. You can also order a 3D print and Christopher, who's overseeing that, said that we're getting more than one 3D print request a day. So it's been really popular since we've launched that as well. And you can now check out a laptop or a mobile hotspot. We've had mobile hotspots available the whole time, but not enough. And Christopher was able to get us up to over 50 now. So we have a lot to check out. More items are gonna be added to the library of things now that we have it established, including the telescope that we had, as well as hopefully some of our sewing machines and more. With Stella leaving, Diana Wong stepped up and agreed to be in charge of curbside. So one of the things that we're gonna do is we're also gonna launch computer printouts starting next Monday. So people will be able to submit mobile printout jobs, pay for them and pick them up through curbside as well. And next Monday, we're gonna be putting out a survey in the curbside bag as well as online to ask some questions about curbside and how else we could expand it. As well as trying to figure out a little bit of demographic information in terms of who's using curbside and, you know, examining how we could spread the word and reach even more people through it. But overall, I have to say, I'm really proud of the staff. They've adapted, found the better ways to handle this route and overall, it has been such a success. And every one of them that works curbside, even when Jonathan's outside, overwhelmingly, the public are so grateful that we're doing it. They're happy to see the staff and I really think it's been very successful, which is good, because who knows when our doors are gonna open to the public. At this point, the soonest date that we've set is after Labor Day, so that would be September 8th. But again, we're just gonna keep watching the numbers and make sure that we're opening in a responsible way, because we don't wanna expose the public or the staff to illness if we don't have to. And especially since we're continuing to expand curbside, I think we have to have a really good, strong reason to open the doors. So Katie and I talk about that in our weekly phone calls. So I'll keep the board updated on that as well. So with programming, just a reminder that we partnered with the Altadena Town Council, Altadena PUSD Schools and the Altadena LA County Parks on their Altadena Voices, Be Heard, Be Seen Community Wide Art Project. We handed out the mini canvases for about two weeks and we're now taking them. The ones that we've received, and I think I was told we have over 20 that we've taken, we're also digitizing those for the town council. And we'll probably do that with the other ones that they receive as well. But I did want to remind people watching and the board, if you also took a canvas, that you can still drop them off with us and please do so. So just a reminder, we're in the last week to file to run for one of the three open seats on the board. Please visit altadina library.org/boardelection for more information. Or I would highly encourage the community members that might be interested to reach out to me. You can email me at n winslow@altadinalibrary.org or give me a call at thelibrary@626-798-0833, extension 103. I'm happy to provide whatever answers I can to questions that people may have, because again, you have to file by Friday. Right now, I've been working with the East, which is our emergency action and safety team on updating our emergency manual. Now that we've gotten over kind of the hump of guidelines to dealing with bringing staff back to work and potentially when we open to the public, we're focusing on all of the other emergencies that could potentially happen. Because who knows what 2020 is still gonna bring. Fingers crossed, nothing, but we're gonna be prepared for it. So we've been meeting either weekly or bi-weekly to develop good emergency preparedness in terms of active shooter, bomb threat, earthquake, fire and more. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring that to the board before the end of this year, but I'm working closely with that team. We're also launching a new series of our equity, diversity and inclusion training that the EDI team has put together, kind of like a two-month plan, where they're gonna focus on one type of concept. I believe this, this two-month series is on implicit bias. Where staff are gonna be not only required to watch a training, but also do some meaningful activities around that. Because we're really trying to emphasize the importance of these concepts with the staff moving forward. We'll have more information about that. And just so the board knows, we're going to share those emails with you as well, in case you wanna be on board with the training that we're doing with staff as well. And lastly, just to touch on the restoration of Millard Canyon at Granite Gate, our painting that sits in the Friends Bookstore area. We did get in touch with Camila Corbella, who the board authorized us to contract with to restore that painting. She's planning to come next week to pick up the painting and anticipates that it's gonna take about one to two months. So as I get updates from her, I'll make sure to let you know. And I did, we did talk to her about making sure that she does a varnish removal test to see like what kind of a difference it does make. And if that's something that the board will wanna explore down the road, we'll bring that back as a different scope of work and with the costs associated. So I think that's about all I have for these past few weeks. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Betsy, I saw your hand.
I have a couple or a comment too. One about curbside, I'm, thank you for, for the whole process. And you said that, that makes it more easier, more efficient for the staff. It's so much easier for the patrons to, than to have to call and, you know, to just be able to pop into your online and pick, you know, put something on hold is huge. I'll just say parenthetically that I'm a curbside pickup patron at more than one library and our library is the best.
Oh, that's good to hear.
Biased. But I definitely think our, I mean, you know, it has to be tailored to the library than it is, of course, but I like our system. I think it's great. I have a question. What kind of things are people 3D printing? I'm just curious. I, I don't know.
You, the couple of things that I've seen, like last week, Christopher had one that took 33 hours to print. It was like a tank that was like this big. Yeah, it's all kinds of different things. There's one family that uses it a lot, but whatever they wanna print, I haven't seen, I don't think Christopher's on the call, but it's all sorts of different things that.
Yeah.
So that printer.
So interesting. And lastly, I just wanted to say for the public's information, I, although I announced it publicly several months ago, I am not running for reelection. So, you know, my seat at least is, is, won't have an incumbent in it. So, you know, if anybody thought that, you know, it would be hard to run against incumbent, I don't know. Just know that there's a seat wide open and that, that anybody who's interested should do as Nikki said and get in touch, because the clock is ticking.
Thank you, Betsy. Jason, I saw a hand from you.
Just a quick question, Nikki. On the, the survey you said that we're putting into the pickup bags for curbside, is that something that's gonna be put on the website that we can kind of move out there to?
Okay. We'll promote it through the website as well. It's still not finalized. I'm meeting with the management team tomorrow morning where we're gonna review what Diana and her staff have put together. So when I, when we do have a finalized version, I'll, I'll have it in my weekly Winslow this week, so the board will get to see it too.
Very cool.
Alright, any other questions for Nikki? Thank you for including us in those EDI trainings. That was gonna be my question and you, you show it. So that's awesome.
Happy, happy to include all of you, of course.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then thank you so much, Nikki. We really appreciate it. And I think we'll move on now to item 5B, which is our ad hoc committee report. So the public funding committee, obviously tonight's meeting is all public funding committee all the time, basically. And so what I thought would make the most sense is to have a quick presentation from our friends at Clifford Moss and they can fill us in on some of the bigger picture. And then after that, we'll do a little Q and A and I'd like to just structure our discussion around each of the resolutions tonight. So we'll have those conversations as part of the next item of new business, if that's okay, because I do wanna keep it with the action items. Does that work for everybody? Cool. Alright, then I'm gonna hand it over to Laura and Bonnie from Clifford Moss. Hi guys.
Hello.
Hello.
And I would just like to request a screen sharing capabilities. And so we'll just, I'll just reintroduce myself and Bonnie to the board. Hi, Laura Crotty with Clifford Moss. We do public engagement and ballot measure prep with clients up and down the state. Happy to be here. Been working with you on public engagement and listening as you prepare for the decision that you're making tonight. And I'm joined here by Bonnie Moss.
Good evening, Bonnie Moss here to support the effort. Glad to be here.
Okay, great. So as President Clark mentioned, we're going to share some information that came up and as some of the questions that we heard during the listening and the board. So this is additional information about the November election. So just a reminder that once a measure is filed, the library district can inform and provide factual information to the public about a ballot measure. The district cannot spend resources to advocate up or down on a ballot, said ballot measure. And paid employees of the library district cannot advocate for or against the measure on district time. They may volunteer on their own time. And this matters as we answer the question as to what does the information-only calendar look like? And so between August 7th, which is the state filing deadline to qualify for the November 3rd ballot and November 3rd, which we call the 88-day election window, the Altadena Library District can and should, as a public service, share information only with the community about the measure, including information-only fact sheets, information-only FAQs, information on all of your online platforms, information about election dates such as, you know, ballots are mailed this week of October 5th. October 19th is the last day to register to vote and take information-only inquiries from the media as well. And then let's dive into the other question that came up, which is what else is going to be on the ballot? So we're gonna break this down into a few different areas statewide, local and just generally big picture. So right now, for the state, there's 12 qualified state measures, of which we'll just share a few that have financial and funding implications. So Prop 14, which is a bond to continue fund stem cell funding, stem cell research. Prop 15, which is the split rule, which would basically increase funding for K through 12 public schools and require that commercial and industrial real estate property be taxed on market value as opposed to assessed value. And then Prop 19, which is a home protection, which allows primary residence holders who are aged 55 years and older severely disabled or victims of wildfires or natural disasters to transfer the taxable value of their primary residence to a replacement residence located elsewhere. And then you can see there's some sources at the bottom, but I won't go into all the detail. Locally, if you chose to pass a measure locally in Altadena, what else would be on the ballot? So right now, nothing else has been filed, including your potential measure. However, as we know, there's been discussions and a initial vote by the Board of Supervisors to pass a reduction in the sheriff budget to go elsewhere. And as you also know, Pasadena Unified School District or did vote to place a bond on the ballot. They, as of last Friday, which is every week, the LA County Register of Voters updates, they hadn't received the filings yet. But we understand that the votes will continue and that those files are likely to happen and we can keep you updated this Friday if they do in fact get filed. So the bigger picture across the state. So it's what, this November election, it's a presidential, it's what we refer to as the mother of all turnouts. So across the state, virtually with all our clients, none of them have bailed on going to the ballot that they were thinking about going, except for one tiny school district in the Central Valley, they got overwhelmed dealing with distance learning. What we know about voters is voters are smart, voters like and are able to think differently about local measures and they're able to differentiate what is on their ballot. So statewide trends that we've seen from California City Finance, you can see in November 2016, there were 430 measures across the state seeking a tax increase of some kind. In November of 2012, 243 of the same. November of 2008, 233. And in November of 2004, 249. Big takeaway here is we can assume hundreds would be on this potential ballot. Again, we will not know that final until the state filing deadline of August 7th, which is next Friday. And we also know some, you know, some case studies of what we've seen in the past. We worked with a district in Riverside County where their polling did not indicate that it would be a good idea to move forward. We recommended that they not move forward with putting something on the ballot. They ended up going in a different direction and going ahead and choosing to place it on the ballot and their final pass rate was below what they needed at 33% yes. Finally, every community is unique and so comparing to other communities is not always easy. Altadena is unique. We love Altadena. You have a special set of voters and demographics all to yourself. And we really like to be data-driven in making decisions about whether or not to place a measure on the ballot. So with that, I can take any questions or any additional information if needed.
Thank you, Laura. So I'd like to. So I'd like to open it up for uh questions from the board. I know I think you guys will be around, but I want to make sure we devote this time um to any questions or, you know, comments or anything from trustees that um Clifford Moss can help us with.
Katie, did you say you wanted to save just like general comments on the overall issue until we get to the?
Yeah, right. Well, exactly. So we're we've got like one job tonight, basically, which is to decide what we want to do, right? Do we want to like form this CFD? And if so, do we want to go to the ballot in November? I'd like to keep that discussion to the resolutions, which are the action items that that really they are. So we'll we'll hold on to that. But if there are questions or if there's other information or anything else you'd like to to get after with Clifford Moss, this would be a good time to do that.
Yeah, more of a comment from me. Uh and that is, thank you very much for preparing that report, uh Laura and Bonnie, because that answered a lot of the questions that I had. And just one little thing, at the very beginning, you had the local measures that were going to be on the ballot. So we would see those all appear on the Altadena ballot in addition to ours. Is that right? There was one slide before that. I wanted to say that uh there we go, 14 or 12, as you say, qualified state measures. So we will see those on our ballot along with ours and also perhaps passing the US. Okay.
Yes, and there will be there will be other, there will be a few other state propositions as well. These are these are some of the more visible ones that we're seeing. But I think the significant thing is locally, there appear to be right now just two other measures that your Altadena Library District voters will be seeing that are local measures on the ballot at the same times that yours would appear.
Okay, great. That really answers the questions I had last time. So thank you for that.
Betsy, go ahead.
Do we have any idea of the past success or failure of PUSD at passing bond measures? And I mean, I remember some when I worked for them, but I just wonder, you know, is 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 their past history with bond measures at all helpful in thinking about their bond being on the same ballot as ours and whether it feels like, you know, that will overload people or, I mean, I get what you're saying, Laura, that people can differentiate, but how how will they differentiate between this and a and a school bond measure?
Yeah, so I think that we really do see the Library District and the district as two different entity. I would second that comment that you mentioned that voters really do see the difference. I don't have the recent ballot.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I can't hear you.
Oh.
I don't know why.
Let me uh. How's, can you hear me now?
Oh, sorry. Now I know. Could you start over? I'm so sorry.
That's that's fine. You can hear me though, right? Yes.
You're good.
Okay. So so we uh so we agree with your seconding our comments that my comments that voters can differentiate between the two really. We really see Altadena Library District separate from Pasadena Unified School District. And we have seen uh in in our past work that we've been doing. I've been doing this for about 10 years, that voters do differentiate between two measures on a ballot. I do not have the local history of Pasadena Unified on their measures. Uh I'd be happy to try to look that up, uh but I don't have that right now.
I I wouldn't bother. I mean, I just wondered if there if anything came up in 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 knowing about their current one, but I'm not sure that it is worth the time.
If 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 I might just add here, um I've been doing this work for 20 years and and our our my steadfast experience is that voters um are very deliberate when they sit down to vote and they will read those ballot questions and make their decisions. And we find that they do distinguish between the two. Or or in this case, if there are three measures that are local. And I do recall Pasadena has been um on the ballot before or trying to get to the ballot. There's been a good deal of turbulence. I don't see that here. I see a lot of collaboration and teamwork. And uh so that's that's certainly something in your favor for this measure that you're considering tonight.
Other questions? Um I had a quick question, which was you guys um give us a breakdown of the number of revenue measures that we've seen in recent cycles over time. And it seems like a pretty stark upward trend. That that number of of revenue measures is is increasing dramatically. I mean, part of that would presumably be that like 2016 was a presidential and 2012 was a midterm. So maybe that was part of it. But what do you guys see in terms of statewide trends? Do you see the number of ballot measures that are presented to voters increasing over time or decreasing over time?
I'm I'm happy to take a stab. And then Laura, if you want to comment. So we are seeing the uh the number of measures continue to increase. What you see in front of you on the screen here now, these are all presidential elections. What we do see typically is that um there is something particularly attractive to local jurisdictions to be on the ballot in a presidential election. And that's because presidential elections draw more voters than any other type of election, including those who are open to these kinds of local revenue measures. And so they tend to be very attractive. The other thing that we're seeing, and certainly now we are in a new uncharted territory, but as um challenges arise at the state, we know that jurisdictions, which which often count on sales tax and other revenue sources that are generated um locally and through the state. They can't count on the state funding the way they did in the past. So we are seeing an increase there. And that's why we always come back to every community is unique. And there's got to be a very deliberate um exercise that happens that you've all been through these last few months, uh and actually goes back years for you because you have your strategic plan and your your facilities plan and all of those things. But it is really important to be in alignment with your community. And I think we have the evidence here that you've been hearing about that shows that there is um is a connection between what you know you need and what voters have told us through the research that they are open to considering. Those are all good signs for the future. But I would suspect, just to wrap up, that what we will likely see as we get into 2022 and beyond is um many more going to the ballot because of the state of the economy and local jurisdictions needing support. So they're all going to go with proposals, I think, in the future. I think we're going to see a lot more of that. Laura?
And I'll just add, I think, yeah, you're, I think what we saw was a was a spike in uh November of 2016. And we also saw a spike just recently. I think if we look at long term trends, probably either to Bonnie's point, jurisdictions needing to cover themselves locally because of a lack of state funding could be there. But I would say long term, uh around 250 or more seems to be a realistic number.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Camila, anything from you? I can't see you, so. Okay. Then hearing none, I'm going to thank uh Laura. Oh, sorry. Yeah, hi. Any questions?
There I am. I had a quick question. I I think that I heard um during the presentation, uh the Clifford Moss individuals, are you, did you say during your presentation that in the past that you do make a recommendation whether or not the measure should be on the ballot? And if so, are are you um stating that it is favorable that we that these measures should be on the ballot? I may have missed that, but I thought I heard you saying that.
I think uh this is Laura. What I um mentioned at the end was that we recommend that the decision be data driven and to use the polling and feasibility results to drive that decision making.
And so we but and so with that, we do see that you are in range for a successful measure, and it will require a community effort. So that is uh our recommendation.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Camila. Any other questions? All right. Um Laura, Bonnie, thank you so much. Will you guys stick around uh for a little while in case some more questions come up during discussion?
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, so we're going to move on now. Um oh, I'm going to say one quick thing as a trustee report. And if anybody else has a trustee report, we can make them. But I just wanted to give everybody a heads up that LA's Department of Regional Planning is undertaking um a survey of Black History in Altadena from sort of the earliest stages through, I think through contemporary times. There was just a an organizing meeting um this Saturday that I went to. And I know that, you know, they're getting connected with Nikki and all the staff, as well as with some of our colleagues over at Altadena Historical Society and Heritage and friends from the Town Council. But just keep your eyes open for that. Some stuff will probably go out in the next little bit. They have a fairly short time horizon. But if anybody has information or people that would be, you know, important to collect oral histories from, a lot of the stuff that we've been sort of working on, this is a really nice alignment. And so we want to try and help them as much as we can. So just keep your eyes open for that. It is in development, and I'm sure we'll have more information out. But it sounds like a really interesting project. So I think it's an exciting one. And I I hope that it is a sign of things to come from LA County that they're interested in investing, you know, in this kind of thing more seriously.
So Katie, is this a chance to try and give the trustee information and so on?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Trustee reports.
The the thing I'd like to report on is I did attend virtually the book pitch that the Friends of the Library put on. It was an interesting event in that Claire was coming in from Cornwall. So it was truly an international event. And uh something worth noting about this is, you know, besides the fun that we all had, was that there were almost as many authors in Altadena pitching books, either they wrote or someone else had wrote, as there were, you know, regular folks like me pitching. So I didn't realize Altadena was the uh the hotbed of Southern Paris in the 1920s or something. So I just wanted to pass that on with a with a literate community we have.
Fantastic. Thank you. Betsy.
Could you just repeat what what department that was in LA County?
It is LA County Department of Regional Planning. Um and I am, I think Nikki has the information, and so I'm sure we'll get it out. But they're they're going to have um some information up on their website, including the presentation that they did and the contact people that they have. They've got like a third party group that's doing the actual survey. So it's like a, it's a, they're, they've contracted with this other outfit called Sappho that's doing the work. But they're trying to kind of coalesce everything together. But yeah, Department of Regional Planning.
Okay.
Who knew? Any other trustee reports? Okay. All right. Then now we have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. And that brings us to item seven, which is our new business. We do have a public comment that came in that I'd like to just go ahead and do at the top because I think it sort of applies to the whole section. And then we'll talk a little bit about the resolutions in this section and what they do. And we will get into it. So Nikki, if you would, would you uh please share that public comment with us?
Can you guys see it?
Yes.
Okay. So we received this public comment this morning from David Datz at 10:48. He says that for the comment for tonight, "I totally support the proposal to create a CFD to raise property taxes and empower borrowing to pay for both operations and necessary improvements to both branches. However, I fear that putting it on the November 3rd ballot at this late date is too risky. If the board votes to do that, once word gets out to the general public, Altadena's anti-tax people, and there are many, will rise up and accuse the board of trying to sneak the measure through without adequate information. They will wonder why they are finding out about it only a couple of months before the election, and they will have a point. Telling them that the information has already been available will not satisfy them. Under the proposal to tax each square foot of developed living space at 10 cents, my own tax would more than triple, from $55 per year to $180 per year. I'm fully willing to pay that, but the anti-taxers will squawk loudly and will point out that with the economy in its worst condition since 1936, now seems like a very bad time to raise taxes. There will not be a time to reply to those arguments before people start voting by mail weeks before November 3rd. Remember, it would only, it will take only 33% plus one vote to defeat the measure. I agree that a special election would be a bad idea. I say wait until 2022 and start the campaign in November 2021." David Datz.
Thank you, Nikki, and thank you to David for sending in his comment. And I think once more, uh sincere thanks is due to all the people who came to our July 27th meeting and shared their thoughts with us. So thank you again to all of them, um both those who joined us live and those who submitted written comments. Okay, so we are into new business. We have four resolutions on the agenda tonight. You guys have all had a chance to look at them. And I'd like to talk briefly about what they do and then get into a little bit of discussion. So um basically, they break apart the decisions we have to make. 202008 is about forming the CFD. So actually, creating the Community Facilities District. We passed a resolution of intention before, say, we intended to form one, and this is actually doing it. 202009 is we're going to take on bonded indebtedness. So again, we had a resolution of intention to incur bonded indebtedness, and this is like part to the actual doing of it. Resolution 202010 calls for a special election to be held on November 3rd in order to do all those things. And 202011 is a little bit of basically election housekeeping, requesting that the Board of Supervisors put that on the LA County ballot. So those are our resolutions. We will vote on each of those separately. But given that it's all kind of one piece, I think it makes sense to go ahead and just open up some discussion on the idea as a whole, if that works for you guys. So I think um because there's a lot on the table and we haven't really had a chance to dive into this, I'd love to just uh let people share their thoughts or their comments, if you'd like to do that. And so if you want to jump in there and kind of lay out where your thinking is, I think that would be a good place to start. Jerry?
Well, I have several questions, but they are spread out over the uh overall of the resolutions.
Okay.
Are you saying, Katie, that we can kind of dive in with whatever?
We can kind of dive in. I don't think it, I don't think it makes a ton of sense to try and be super precise about splitting everything out because it's sort of a chain of events, right?
All right. Well, and I'd like to do it also while Lauren and Bonnie are still on the line with us.
Yeah.
This, these are things that have just occurred to me, and they're not, they don't really indicate where my thinking is about this or what the board might do in the future. But I wondered if the CFD i- is allowed to address authorized expenses, and that's already been established. Is there also, is there, could some of this CSD money ever be used to acquire any little different uh pieces of real estate or anything in Altadena? Or is that all going to be described and we can't really get outside that bubble?
So I think Nora is here with us from BB and K, and I'm not going to pretend to be a lawyer, but I'm going to let Nora feel that question. I'm pretty sure the answer is no, but I would I would defer to her. Nora, do we have you on the line?
Yes, sorry. I'm just trying to, can you guys hear me? Okay. So you would be limited in using the special taxes to the facilities and services set forth in the resolution of formation. So that is described in Section 6, and then I believe also listed. also listed, sorry, I'm just scrolling through my, it's also Exhibit A to that resolution. So those are your authorized facilities and services, and that is solely what you would be able to use with special tax revenue.
Can I ask a follow-up to that, Nora? There is, however, no restriction, I mean, apart from like, you have to do things legally, but there's no restriction on our regular revenue, right? So like, our regular property tax revenue that we collect, that forms like two-thirds of our budget or our reserves, there's no restriction on how we use that as part of this whole process?
I would have to look into that, but not that I'm aware of.
It doesn't impose any new restrictions on existing funding streams that are-
No, no, no. This is just restrictions on how the special tax revenues would be allowed to be used.
Thank you. Terry, go ahead.
Well, another question I had is that it goes into detail all through the resolutions about the fact that we would be the ones preparing the tax rules and so on. And I think we do that already, but I'm wondering if that kind of complicates things and adds a lot more work and judgment to what we need to do. And then I have a follow-up question to that as well.
So that's-
Do you want to shoot that out there right now?
Well, so I'm gonna bring Sarah from NBS on to answer that question, because they are our tax rule preparation experts. So Sarah, can you speak to Terry's question?
Yeah. So just to make sure, Terry, that I heard you correctly, you're asking about the kind of administrative process of levying the CFD special tax on an annual basis. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. I'm wondering if it added a big work burden to what we're already doing.
Not really. So you already have a parcel tax, and that is already something that NBS is contracted to do the administration for. And so this special tax works just a little bit differently, where we're looking at different factors to calculate the levy. But in the same way that we look at every single parcel and levy the parcel tax currently, we would do that same work for you related to the CFD. So it's not really an additional administrative burden. There would be a resolution that comes back to the board on an annual basis, and I think we've talked about that at previous meetings, but you would be able to, as a board, levy less than the maximum special tax by way of that resolution. But that's all the additional work that's required, is consideration of that resolution and kind of setting that annual budget. The parcel-by-parcel analysis is something that I imagine you would continue to contract out.
And then the follow-up question real quick, Katie, was, it makes it apparent that the current Board of Trustees for the Library is also the board for the CFD. So I'm wondering-
I'm so sorry. Can you talk just a little bit louder? It's just a little bit hard to hear you.
I just got a new microphone, so tell me if-
Better. Yeah, closer is better.
Okay. The second question, the follow-up, was that it makes it pretty clear that the Board of Trustees for the Library will also be the board for the Community Facilities District, right? And I'm just wondering if we, you know, start to vote on different expenditures and stuff, how much overlap is there between what we do for the Library and what we might be expected to do for the CFD?
So this is Nora, just to clarify. So the CFD is its own separate legal entity, and the Board of Directors of the Library District is the legislative body of the CFD. So, you know, similar to slightly different terms, but I guess I'm unclear on the second part of the question, how it relates to the Library District.
Well, I just wondered if there's a section now that we need to do at our meetings that only is CFD business, if you see what I'm saying. And also, if we need to vote on expenditures and things like that, that the Director will put forward.
So I think, like Sarah mentioned, annually, you would vote as the, you know, the Board of Directors or Board of Trustees of the Library District, acting in your capacity as the legislative body of the CFD to annually levy the special taxes and put them on the roll.
Okay.
So it could just be included on your regular agenda, when it, you know, it could take place as part of your regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Love to feel, yeah, Betsy, please.
Kind of related to Terry's question just now, I'm noticing on page 19, in Section 8D, it talks about the Library District Director acting for or and on behalf of the CFD show annually, by the way, there was a little typo there. File a report with the board as required pursuant to this code. And I'm just wondering, what does that report provide us? I mean, what's required to be in that report? What will it do for us?
Yeah, let me just, I can just pull up the language of that. So that-
But I- I'm sorry. Sarah, is that the report that we brought with the GAN appropriations? Same type of thing that I take to the board?
I believe it's the report that, it just has some pretty basic financial information about the Community Facilities District, and that is something that is required to be filed annually, but it's also something that, you know, as the NBS would include in our scope of service for the CFD administration. So we would be able to prepare a brief report for the board related to the CFD on an annual basis.
And this is Nora. So the Government Code section specifically requires that the annual report contain the amount of special taxes collected and expended, and then the status of any project authorized to be funded. So you would, under the government code, you would provide measures that you'd state the specific purposes of the tax, and then, you know, just a requirement that the special tax proceeds are applied only to the specific purposes set forth in your resolution. So then you create this annual report, and every year you state the amount of funds collected and then expended.
Thank you.
And as Sarah said, the Government Code section, you know, you have to designate a member or an officer, an employee of the district, but it can be done, you know, by a consultant, prepared.
Thank you. Other questions? I think this is good. Any sort of informational questions or questions on the resolutions? Wait, did we lose Camila?
Yeah, I don't see her phone anymore.
I will text her, Katie.
Okay. I know she had a transition where she was gonna try to come off the phone and onto a computer, but I want to make sure we have her on board.
So Katie, can I just make some general comments as we're waiting for Camila to jump in?
Oh, that's Camila. So wait for five seconds, and then yes. Camila, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So Jason was just about to make some general comments, so go for it, Jason.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, just want to thank the ad hoc committee and, you know, all of the professional folks joining us tonight who've helped on this. And I'm sure you've all put in a lot of time that the rest of us have not been witness to in just helping getting this together. And so, you know, I'm gonna place, you know, as far as the specifics and the legalities, I'm gonna place my faith in the folks who put in that time. You know, to the general question of how we move forward and if we should move forward, you know, now versus some other date and time, and you're kind of, where I believe the community is at on this question, I would argue the community's already made it clear that we need to do this, and it should have already been done, to be honest with you. You know, we started down the path of the new strategic plan. We heard loud and clear from the community over and over and over again that, you know, we need to continue to expand programs, we need to continue to expand resources, and that we needed to desperately address the facilities issues, right? We continued to hear it with the facilities work that we did with the community, and I think we've continued to hear it since, both with the polling results, the surveys that people have done, the comments that were made last week. You know, I frankly believe that we have a mandate to do this and to do it now. You know, on the question of, you know, quote-unquote anti-tax people, look, there's just a, you know, a small segment of not just Altadena, but the entire state who just oppose taxes. Doesn't matter what the issue is. You could tell people, hey, we're gonna cure childhood cancer. Nope, I'm not gonna raise taxes. And I think there's nothing we're gonna do to sway those folks. You know, the only other argument we've heard against this is it's just not the right time. It's a tough economic time. And I think that's already addressed and built into this. There will be a low-end income exemption to whatever it is that we decide to do. There's already one currently, and I think this board is fully committed, and the library leadership, to doing a much better job of making the community is aware of that, making sure folks are aware of that. So, you know, and I also honestly, I think, you know, we have a country that's been screaming for social justice for months now. And I think this is an issue that we have a unique opportunity in Altadena, where we have local control to take action on some issues that I believe are social justice issues. It is unacceptable that there are members of our community who do not have full access to the main library, and it's been unacceptable for quite some time. We have not fully resourced the Bob Lucas branch for quite some time, and I think we have an opportunity in the community support to do just that. And, you know, I guess I'll just wrap up. You know, I wanted to just kind of read some of the quotes from some of the folks that spoke in the public forum last week. "I want to be able to wake up on November 4 with a smile on my face, knowing that regardless of who is elected, we stepped up to improve Altadena. Our community deserves libraries that reflect our community's values. What we are asked to do is small by comparison to the benefits to be gained." And the last one that touched me was, "There's no better time than now. It's time to be the best neighbors that we can be." And I think those quotes really reflect where the vast majority of our friends and neighbors in Altadena stand on this issue.
Thank you so much, Jason. I wonder if anybody else would like to share some thoughts or ask questions, or if anybody has a response to Jason. I want to keep the floor open so we have an opportunity to just move this discussion through. Betsy, I just saw your hand.
Jason, that was so eloquent and so well-stated. Thank you. It pretty much crystallized exactly how I feel. And I, too, was reflecting on those comments at our public forum, and for me, I didn't go back and listen to them again, but Dr. Thomas said something that really stuck with me, which was something like, "We're gonna pay. We're gonna pay now or we're gonna pay later. You know, let's do it now." And in that context, I especially think about our community suffering in financial distress. It is hard. It is hard to take a leap and ask for their faith in us. But our community needs us more than ever when they're in financial distress. And, you know, in order for us to be there for the community in the way it needs us to be there, we need to ask this of them. And you're right. I mean, I am on this committee, and I've heard it firsthand from people sitting here on my patio talking to me about their opinions about it. You know, I, too, feel like it's a mandate. It's difficult. It's difficult to feel the tenor at the times and do something so hopeful that's gonna cost people. But one sense I really had during the process of all of the work we've been doing behind the scenes was a sense I've had as a trustee ever since I became a trustee, which is lifting my eyes above the horizon of right now, and thinking back 100 years to the people who formed this library, which passed by two-thirds vote, by the way. Now, I went and looked at the original formation of the Altadena Library District. There were something like 303 votes, and two-thirds of them, two-thirds of them voted yes. And, you know, we have been entrusted with the well-being of this institution, both physically and, I don't know how to say, spiritually, but, you know, physically and all the things that it does, to pass it on to the people who come after us. And I think the time is now. I think the time is now.
Thank you, Betsy. Terry?
Both of the previous board members spoke so eloquently about this whole situation, and I want to echo what they said about the work that the committee is doing with all of our professional consultants. That's very impressive. One thing that kind of bothers me a little bit is that I'm not sure we have enough of a head start on this whole thing in terms of the public awareness and so on. And one thing that would be important to meet here, maybe a little bit more about this meeting, would be, what is the infrastructure for a committee or a group of people going to be that will kind of carry the torch from now until Election Day, because we'll have to move pretty quickly to get our message out effectively to everybody. I agree with David Datz that there's gonna be a lot of naysayers in this. And what I read before in the past about past elections where measures like this were defeated was that primarily it happened because it was an anti-tax group that got in front of them. And I think that's great. Everybody should be echoing their point of view. But I, like Betsy, believe that now is the time to get this done. I think we've got a lot of momentum going right now. That would be hard for us to reproduce at a later date. So that's my thought, I guess, right now.
I think, you know, Terry, maybe I can speak a little bit to that question you asked about campaign structure, which is, you know, there's a division, right, between the information-only work that the Library District can and should do during an election window, whenever that occurs, and then the work that an independent, privately-funded, separate campaign committee would do. And, you know, it's tough to have these discussions in a really effective way, because like, as trustees, we're wearing our library trustee hats and not our campaign hats, right? And those are separate things. But I will say, as somebody who's been wearing both hats for the last couple months, you know, I can assure you that there is an exceedingly organized, very targeted, well-funded, independent campaign effort that is ready to jump into action. I will also say that it looks different from the campaigns that have happened in the past for some of the parcel tax efforts, and that is in no way an effort to diminish their achievements. I think, you know, just looking at the results from the Measure A vote last time it came in speaks to how incredibly effective that effort was. It was a very different style of campaign than will be needed this time for lots of reasons, right? This is a different kind of question. It's more complicated, but it also is asking voters to approve different things. And we're also in a time where we can't go knock on doors, and we can't, you know, sit down at Front Worth Park with people and talk with them at a table. It's going to have to be a different style of campaign. What I will say, based on all the planning and the infrastructure that I've seen, and I'd be, you know, more than happy to talk with you extensively about this offline, is, you know, that effort is targeted, it is specific, it is very smart, and it's very strategic. So I would sort of compare it more to like a surgical strike than, you know, a grassroots effort that unfolds over a long period. Not that one is better than the other, but just that I think this is much more suited to the moment we find ourselves in, especially given the restrictions that exist around face-to-face campaigning, unfortunately.
Thanks for that, Katie.
Yeah. Yeah. Other questions, thoughts that anybody would like to share? Camila, anything that you'd like to speak to?
Hi. No, it's pretty simple to me. And I think that, I know that it wasn't a big, large representation of the Altadena population, but the people that were there, there was no one in opposition. And I think that that data, you know, kind of also speaks in volumes. And so I think that thinking about what is necessary, I, I think that it is, it makes sense to go ahead and move forward. So, yeah, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that. You know, I'll, I guess, say a little bit about where, where I'm coming at this from. So obviously, you know, Betsy and I have been on this committee for some time now. And I will say that, Jason, I think you made this point, and it's exactly right, that there has been a ton of behind-the-scenes work, not just with our expert consultants, but also with members of the community. And I think we've had a really, a really special opportunity to have a lot of conversations with a lot of really smart, really informed, really engaged people who care about our library. People who come at this question about whether it makes sense to do this, if it makes sense to do it now, come at it from different angles, come at it from very different perspectives, different backgrounds, people who find themselves impacted by the pandemic in very different ways. And, you know, I think Betsy said it best at one point in our committee process, when she said, you know, regardless of everybody's background and the many differences of opinion that exist, the one thing everybody agrees on is how important the library is and what a unifying force it is and how positively they view it as a core component of what makes our community really special. And I have definitely seen that in evidence in all the conversations I've had with people who maybe agree with me and people who really don't agree with me. There is a consensus around what a critical role the library plays. And I don't think that this is an easy choice or one that we should take lightly. I myself have gone back and forth many times about the timing. I mean, I feel very intensely the impact of the pandemic and the economic moment that we're in. One of my businesses has been shut down since March 13th and it may never reopen. And that's a reality that I know pales in comparison to people who have lost their jobs or lost loved ones. And I think that we are in a unique and uniquely challenging moment. But I also think that we have an obligation to make sure that we live up to the values that we said we cared about. And the most important one of those for me is equity. The idea that we are a district that values equity means to me that we must have library facilities that everyone can use and that we invest in all parts of our community equally. You know, one of the conversations that I had with somebody was very emotional. And she said, "I'm not asking for the Bob Lucas Library to get an upgrade or a facelift. I'm asking for it to be made whole, for an investment to finally be made that should have been made decades ago." And that has really stuck with me. I think that that's exactly right. And for me, there's no question that there are challenges. I think we have tried structurally to address those challenges as intentionally and thoughtfully as we can. I know that there will be people, as Jason said, who will not support this and who will never vote for it. And, you know, that's, that's sort of okay. That's why we have democracy, like, that's, that's the deal. But I think that, speaking for the majority of Altadena, and I firmly believe a majority that is greater than two-thirds, we will have a consensus that making our libraries whole, that doing the right and equitable and fair thing in this moment is one of the most powerful things we can do. So I, you know, wholeheartedly am in favor of moving forward. But I also think that if we're going to move forward, it's important that we do it as a unified body. This is a big undertaking. And I would, I would like to get to a place of consensus among everybody. Oh, it looks like we have Camila on video. Hi, Camila. All right. So that being said, shall we call the question and move into some voting? Or do you guys want to discuss a little further? We'll obviously have an opportunity to discuss each of these resolutions as we get to them, but I don't want to force stall discussion on anything because I think this is probably one of the most important decisions we're gonna make. Betsy.
I just have one more thing to say about timing.
Yeah.
And of course, you know, it's hard, it's hard to, you know, you can't read the future and it's hard to know what, you know, future board is gonna look back and say, gee, I wish we'd known that or whatever. But my faulty little crystal ball says, based on everything we've heard from our experts and from our community, that it's only gonna get worse. The timing is only gonna get worse. It's gonna get worse because we're not gonna have as much turnout ever, probably, as we will in this election. And therefore, this is our, this is our opportunity to, to get, to get the loudest, most complete answer to the question that we will ever get. And not only that, something that occurred to me in our deliberations as a committee was that, I don't know about you guys, but pretty much everybody I talked to who talks about the parcel tax remembers how they voted. And this, giving our community the opportunity to actively like press a button or, you know, actively make a mark that says, "Yes, I believe in the library", is not just what happens that day and whether or not we get this money to do what we know we need to do. That is, that is, tho- those votes, those thousands and thousands of votes are gonna echo into the future and be our, be our support, you know, long after we're all gone and somebody else is in our seats. So I, I, I think the turnout is a huge reason why now is the right time. What was said earlier about, about, you know, the jockeying of other measures that are gonna be on future ballots, that's only gonna get to be more competition and, you know, more of a, more of a a difficult field to be in the middle of than it is now. I mean, we've talked about how lucky we are to be a district that is agile and can move quickly. That's why we move quickly and I get it. I get that our timeframe is very short. And I, I, with all respect to David Datz, who has such great institutional memory about where we've come from, I, I just feel like it's, it's only gonna get harder. And so it's, it doesn't feel like a good time, but I think in the future, looking back on it, it's gonna feel like it was the best time.
Thank you, Betsy. Anything else anybody would like to bring to the floor before we move into some voting? Okay, let's do it. All right. So this brings us to Resolution 2020-08, a resolution forming and establishing the Altadena Library District Community Facilities District, number 2020-1. This is found on page, beginning on page 16, sorry, that's the stamp report. I want to be accurate. Beginning on page, yeah, 16 of your board report, of your board package. And so this, an "I" vote on this resolution will affirmatively form the Community Facilities District. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-08.
So move.
It's in like a millisecond before.
Instant replay.
I'll second Jason.
Okay. Jason moved, Betsy seconded. Any discussion or further debate on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call. Oh, Betsy, no, 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 it's fine. Yeah, no, go for it.
All right. Is this the time to just point out a couple of typos?
Uh, yeah, go for it.
Okay. I, I already did in passing, but I'm gonna just say again on page 19, Section 8D, the word "shelk" should be "annually" file. And this comes up a couple of times and I'll point it out when it comes up again. But on page five, Section 11A, in the fourth line, sorry to be kind of a grammarian, but I do believe the verb tense should be cast, not casted. I'm, I'm pretty sure. I didn't look it up, but I'm pretty sure.
This is Nora. I can make those changes and send them over to Nikki.
Okay, thank you. That, that's it for that one.
What are we gonna do without a librarian on the board?
I don't know.
Betsy, you have, you have a civic responsibility to call a public comment and be like, listen, page 24.
I told you all one time that in third grade, I was in a play and my role was Miss Dictionary.
That's.
It was very dramatic because my spine got broken.
Long destined.
Wow. That's amazing. All right. Okay. So then I'd like, Jason, if you would, please just amend your motion to approve Resolution 2020-8 with the, the copy editing corrections that Betsy indicated.
Yeah, I'll amend the motion to, to approve with Betsy's recommended grammatical changes.
Okay. And can I get a second on that, please? Okay, seconded by Terry. Perfect. So moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2020-08 with the indicated copy editing corrections. Any additional commentary or debate on this item? Okay, hearing none, we will proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews. Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
I'm sorry, can you say just a little bit louder?
Aye.
Thank you. Perfect. And that's an "I" vote for me. So that resolution unanimously passed to form the CFD. Our next item is Resolution 2020-09, a resolution of the Altadena Library District Board of Trustees, acting as the legislative body of the newly formed Altadena Library District Community Facilities District, number 2020-1, bracket Facilities and Services, deeming it necessary to incur a bonded indebtedness of such Community Facilities District to finance certain public facilities. So basically, this is the one that says we need to incur bonded indebtedness to do what we need to do. So there is a, there is an affirmative need to do that. Any questions or discussion on this resolution before we move to a motion and a vote? Okay?
Just, sorry.
Yep.
There's, there's one little typo on this one too. Should I tell you now?
Yep.
Okay. Same thing, page 35, Section 9A, also, line four should be cast, not casted. That's the one.
Thank, thank you. I appreciate all the, all the tyco catches.
Perfect. Okay. Then I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-9.
I'm moving to approve that motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further debate or discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
I vote "aye" as well. That resolution is unanimously approved. Okay, that brings us to Resolution 2020-10, a resolution calling for the holding of a special election to be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, for a measure to authorize the levy of a special tax to finance certain facilities and services, incur a bonded indebtedness, and to establish an appropriations limit. And this resolution appears beginning on page 39 of your package. Any discussion or questions on this resolution?
I, I had a couple of questions about this. I, I think, I think I kind of figured it out, but I'm just trying to figure out on page 41 about the, about the arguments and the rebuttals.
Yeah.
So 6A says that we authorize you, Katie, any voter, any association or any combination of voters and associations to, to file a written argument in favor of. So we're basically saying, bring it on. Anybody who wants to write an argument for or against it, go ahead.
Um, mo- mostly.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the Clifford Moss folks who know a little bit more about arguments in favor.
Or against.
Or against. Well, we don't have, we can't authorize somebody to write an argument against.
We, it's, that's what it says we're doing, that we're authorizing people to write a written argument in favor for, of, or against.
I'll make a comment and then I think Nora may also want to make a comment from the legal side. But generally, what we, what we see and what we advocate for is that it is a community effort that we are also, several folks here as volunteers are active in submitting an argument in favor. And actually Clifford Moss is happy to write that argument in favor. We are very deliberate in the way that we do that. And so at the end of the day, the registrar of voters will only accept one argument in favor. And I believe, and Nora, I hope you'll, you'll comment on this, that, that perhaps seeing that in the resolution is, is allowing the board president to drive that process. And for, on the in-favor side, it's also true that the registrar of voters will accept an argument against if, if one is presented. And we have worked with clients where there are multiple arguments in favor that are submitted and multiple arguments against that are submitted. And, and this provision allows the board president to submit or coordinate that effort on behalf of the district and allowing for a community effort on the plus side, on the, on the argument against. Obviously, our best, our best scenario is that no one files an argument against. Nora, would you agree with that?
Hi, I'm Nick Norvell. I'm yours.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Nora, I jumped in. I've been working with Nora on the elections aspect of preparing the resolutions and the measure. And Ms. Moss's summary is, is completely correct. If there are multiple versions submitted, the registrar will make a decision about what gets printed. But this generally authorizes the board president and then if there are community associations to put in as well.
So your, so your board president is the, is the driver of your argument in favor? And as I said, we'd be happy to write that and have planned to. We cannot, we cannot predict what will happen on the arguments against side.
And where, and where it says the election official who's making the decision, that means the registrar of voters?
Yes, in this case, that's what it means.
Okay. Okay, that's what I needed to visualize. Thank you.
And we do, I will say, we do have an opportunity, you'll see in the very next little section, to write a rebuttal. So if an argument against does in fact get filed, we do have an opportunity to respond to that and write a subsequent argument, you know, addressing those points specifically. Other questions about this resolution or comments or thoughts? Okay. Then I am going to ask for Okay, then I am going to ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-10.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion from Jason. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Betsy. I, I saw her just a second before you, Terry. All right. So the motion has been made and seconded. Any further debate or discussion on this item? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews. Oh, you're muted, Terry. Could you do that one more time so he can hear you?
Sorry, this is a whole new setup for me, so I'm struggling. Aye.
Thank you so much. Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that resolution is unanimously approved. All right, we have just one more, which is Resolution 2020-11, a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Los Angeles to consolidate a special district election to be held November 3rd, 2020, with a statewide general election pursuant to section ten, four, zero, three of the election code. And this resolution appears on page forty-three of your package, including the text of the ballot question. Any questions or discussion on this one? Betsy.
Um, in section five, on page forty-four, it talks about reimbursing the county for any costs. And I wonder if we know what those might be and how much they might be.
Oh, that's a good question. I think that's our standard, like, how much does an election cost? Um,
Is it, is it above and beyond the trustees part that we, that we have to pay or?
I don't know if I have an answer to that. Nikki, do you, do you know the answer to that?
I do not. And Nicole would, because she's the one that pays the bill with the campaign. Um, and she's not here right now.
Okay.
But I can get back to you on that.
Okay, it would be good to know.
Unless one of the consultants knows.
I believe there typically is a separate cost for it, but it may depend on your local county and how they divide up the cost of the election. That should be something that we should, can be easily find out from the registrar, though. And, and if they can't provide an exact cost estimate now, they could at least tell us what sort of formula they use and it maybe give us an idea in the past of what's typically cost for special district measures.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on this resolution? Okay. Hearing none, then I'm gonna request a motion to approve Resolution 2020-11.
I shall move.
Okay, motion has been made by Terry. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, made and seconded. Thank you. Uh, any further debate or discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a roll call vote. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Kapal.
Aye.
Trustee Khan.
Aye.
Trustee Wilkerson.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So that resolution is also unanimously approved. All right, guys, we're doing it. Happening. Okay. That is everything in our new business section, um, for tonight's agenda. As far as I know, we have no additional, um, correspondence in section eight that I'm aware of. As always, uh, the floor is open for future agenda items unless something, you know, unusual happens. Our next meeting will be our regularly scheduled August meeting, which will be August twenty-fourth. Right? Yes. Uh, so Monday, August twenty-fourth, that'll be our regular August meeting, um, at 5:00 PM. So as always, we're, uh, happy to take any agenda item suggestions now, or you can always send this to me or to Nikki um, at any point for inclusion on a future agenda. Okay.
Okay, Katie, I have just a quick comment.
Please.
That is, uh, could we expect a little bit more detail on, on the efforts to, uh, engage the community on this issue? Or is that appropriate? And who would spearhead that and so on?
Yes. Um, so given that we've just voted to move into our election window, we now all have split personalities and are, in our role as trustees, if you guys will refer back to that, uh, do's and don'ts memo that Nikki sent around about election, um, that kind of delineates very clearly. So I'm sure at our August meeting, we'll, we'll hear a report on what information-only efforts are being undertaken by the district to inform and educate voters. For any campaign efforts, those happen offline with personal email addresses, so not using your district email, not using your district phone, not using any district resources. So rest assured that it is an all-hands-on-death process and I will certainly and other, you know, committee members will be in touch, um, you know, on, on those efforts going forward. But those now need to become very separate so that there's no district investment in the process of, of persuading. The district can only inform and educate, and we want to keep those lines really, really clear. So the answer is yes, but in a different setting. Any other thoughts or comments? I just want to thank everybody, um, who was with us tonight from our various teams of consultants. We have certainly appreciated your expertise as we've moved through this process. And now as we begin to transition into our election window, um, I know we will call on you in different ways, shapes and forms going forward, but thank you for helping us conduct a process of listening and outreach that led us to, you know, a really, I think, well-informed decision tonight. We appreciate your efforts and also a very heartfelt thank you to everybody in the community who contributed their thoughts, their perspectives, their opinions, um, to help guide us in our decision-making process. And last but not least, thank you to all the trustees who have been putting in so much time and energy and effort into making this happen. It's really, I think it's an exciting time and it's gonna be a really amazing ninety-two days. So with that, um, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. You have to say it out loud. You gotta say it aloud. Yep.
Getting my mute going. I, I motioned that we adjourn.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any opposition? Hearing none, I declare us adjourned at 6:37 PM. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for everybody else for joining.